Okay, folks, it's wow. Can you hear me? It is six o'clock and we're gonna call this meeting to order. Everybody will please have a seat. What do y'all think about these new speakers? Can you hear us? If you can't, come on forward. We'll really get close. Council members, I want to remind each one of you, please speak into the microphone. If you turn your head one way or the other, sometimes it gets distorted to the back. So if you can't, speak into the microphone directly. Okay, everybody will please rise. We're gonna have the Boy Scouts do our invocation and pledge. This is Mr. Elliot Lehman. Go ahead. Are you gonna give us a little background here, a little information? So y'all can have a seat. Divockation, I'm sorry.
We gotta pray, we gotta pray, Dennis. We need all the prayer we can get.
Now we'll go into that. Information. All right. Thank you very much, we appreciate that. Thank you, Elliot. Okay, now we have comments from citizens. As we said always before, we'd please limit your comments to three minutes. We'd appreciate that. And as before, we cannot respond if something's not on the agenda. So Larry, I think you're the first one up. Would you like to say something?
How's that? Ms. Weaver, is that too loud? We're doing good. Adjust it. Okay. And the only other comment I had to make is since Jimbo Snyder put it on Facebook that where the accident occurred on the Four Corners, I don't know what the status is on that, but I know Tech Dot, two or three years ago, said that they received a letter from the mayor and the city manager that they could look into doing something at that four-way and it wouldn't cost the city a dime. And a roundabout was discussed and a four-way stop was discussed. But anyway, have y'all sent them anything or requested anything?
I wouldn't worry that, but if it takes a letter, I don't mind sending them a letter. I'd be more than happy to do that this week.
And that's all it takes? To get on their list so they can look at their own intersections and that? Because we've had so much growth. That's no, because North Point is not a state highway. Thank you.
I saw you somewhere. There you are.
I just wanted to do a reminder and an update on the support groups that we talked about last meeting. The dementia support group is a Temple-wide support group. We just go, you know. It's hosted by the Brookdale Western Hills Retirement Home Assisted Living Area. And we'll put the address up. If you do, our one information on it, it's Elizabeth Chandler is the lady that is kind of overseeing the whole thing. It's hosted by the Brookdale, but they don't have, I mean, they're not doing anything except providing and helping organize it. The main sponsor, supporter of the dementia group is Scott &amp; Wyatt. And they bring their doctors over, their people that work with older folks. And then hospice, there's a lot of places in town that support hospice, businesses that support hospice. And they've had quite a few people come in and talk about what services they provide. Most of us don't have a clue about that stuff unless you have a family member or something involved. And it's kind of nice if you have a heads up of what some of the potential support things are. Because if you've ever looked into that at all, it's extremely expensive. The other one was the cancer support group that we're starting up here. We're gonna have our inaugural get-together. We don't want to call it a meeting, because certainly it's not gonna be a meeting. We're gonna get together Thursday, this Thursday, over here at Jalisco's and just have a little food, dinner-type thing. Come as you are. Sit around and talk. What we're looking at is some of us who have had or have cancer, scary. Very scary. And then whoever your caregiver is, your support people, it's really scary for them too, because it's kind of, believe it or not, in this day and age, it's really difficult to get straight answers. And you hear a lot of things, you know. So our experiences, what we've had, where we've had successes and failures, and the fact that working together, we can probably help each other, not feel like you're the only guy in town that's got a problem. And I did want to mention, the dementia group meets every second Thursday, so two days after this one, over there, and it's at 6:30. So that's at Brookdale. They're very friendly, just come in. They got some little snacky food and stuff, so you won't starve to death. At least I never starved to death over there. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Okay, our usual Pam, Linda, Jimanne, who, all of you above or one of each? Each one of you, how you want to do it? Okay.
Ta-da. Pam Robinson, 23 Triton, Mary Ruth Briggs Library Chairperson. And I'm here to announce that we are starting, have started, a senior group. It is called Elder Explorers at the Point, and we have flyers. And it was approved by the library, the library sponsoring the group. And our purpose, we have several purposes and goals, to fill a needed spot. In Morgan's Point, we had groups for children, families, adults, but there's nothing for seniors, for everyone to get together. So that's what this is for. And to help communication with and for seniors. Many of them do not use the Internet. They don't know how to text. They don't have a smartphone. They are not on social media. So they never know what is going on unless they get the newsletter. They still expect the newsletter to be sent to them. But this program is a good way to bring them together, and we will let them know about all the activities in the city and give them a sheet detailing what's happening the next month. And they can take it home and put it on their refrigerator with a magnet or put it with, you know, their calendar. And another thing, it's close to home. It will be held in the event center. It's close to home and it's a good time period for seniors. Most seniors don't want to leave, go far. They don't want to go to Belton. They don't want to go to Temple for senior activities. And the time that we're having it is nine to 12. And it is a good time for seniors. They've been up probably for hours and hours anyhow. Also, most seniors don't like to drive after dark. Or they, you know, so, but we feel like the morning hours are perfect for them. Socialization, this is a perfect opportunity for people of this age and generation and history to get together and talk and laugh and reminisce. No dues or admission, it's all free. Our meetings are held here in the event center on the fourth Thursday of each month, from nine to 12. And our first meeting is on Thursday, April 27th, from nine to 12. We'll have coffee and donuts. And our program will be mingled with the candidates. And what we're doing is having all the candidates who are running for city council to come and join us, speak one-on-one with the seniors, and let them know who you are, what you look like, what you believe in. And so if you're running for city council, we would wish that you would come join us that morning and be with us. Our second meeting is going to be held on Thursday, May the 25th, from nine to 12 here in the event center. Our program is going to be given by our own NPR fighter department, who will give us a demonstration of the AED and tell people what to do when the EMS arrives at their house. So we invite all of you and hope we're going to have other programs and speakers. So please join us.
So Linda Bridges, 197 Lake Forest Drive. So my comment is, we need everyone's help if you have a neighbor or a relative that fits in this category, if we can figure out how to get them the information and a ride to the senior center or something like that. Anyway, thanks.
Appreciate it very much. Jimanne? Wow. That's what I'm thinking. Okay, moving right along on the agenda. Next thing we had was our chief, but I understand your presentation is postponed. Get them again, right?
Yeah, my fault.
Maybe next time, right? Okay, next thing on the agenda is our consent agenda. It basically includes the Minister of the March 14th agenda. Can you hear? Could you hear that one? Couldn't hear Donna?
No. That's a first. Oh, you know what?
Thank you, Bruce.
I think it might have been Neil. Okay, what I was saying is in the minutes, when we appoint somebody to a committee, we like the minutes to reflect that person's name. So when we go to look up what year they went on or if they're due up again, we can go right to the minutes instead of digging through our packets. So I would like to, I would like to change that and put Becky Cooley's name as the appointment we made to P&amp;Z on item five.
You have a motion to accept the minutes without adjustment to it in the Part 14th?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion on it? Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Reopposed? Motion passes. Thanks, folks. Okay. Speaking of Becky.
I am Becky Cooley, Chairman of the Planning and Zoning Committee and the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee. We've discussed several items in planning and zoning, but have nothing to bring to you tonight. So hopefully, maybe next month or the month after.
Keep up the good work. I know y'all are meeting, so progress is being made, so.
Absolutely.
Yes, so keep up. Can we help with anything?
Not at the moment.
Good grief. Well, we appreciate that very much. Any other thing, any other comments you have?
Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee, we met on March 29th, mainly focusing on the vision statement. And then we'll have our next meeting. It's currently in the works of being planned. We don't have a finalized date yet.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Folks, any of you in council have any questions or anything they want to ask Becky while she's here?
No, I mean, I brought it up at the meeting, but I would like to see our citizens get those survey results. A lot of people have been clamoring for them, especially online, saying, hey, we want to see the survey we filled out. So, you know, I think we need to get that out to our citizens just as soon as we can. And the steering committee would like a coffee too, please.
I realize that we're due to have that information. Okay, item number five is a public hearing for the adoption of curfew hours for minors at Morgan's Point. So at this point in time at 6:17, I'm gonna open a public hearing to anybody that wants to make any comments on our news or our existing curfew. I'm gonna have Officer Todd Dodge is gonna give us a little information. Then we'll open it up to anybody who has any questions. Anybody here shed? Are we still coming across?
So, I guess every three years, if I'm correct, ordinance come up for evaluation, look over, make sure everything's good. The curfew came, one came up, and as Chief Schutzy and I was looking at it, there were some major issues with some wardages that needed to be removed. So I'm not quite sure what those were, but I had some answers to some questions people had about how many curfew citations were issued. Kind of get on a soapbox about that, but I'll keep that comments to myself. In the past year, so the past 12 months, we've issued 10 curfew tickets, citations that went to the municipal court. There have been 13. Okay, sweet, thank you. 13 committed minor possession crimes that were committed during curfew hours. So instead of stacking tickets, instead of stacking tickets, they issued, you know, possession of tobacco, alcohol, instead of adding on to that. We also had a change-up from paper tickets to electronic tickets. So I can't review further back than a year on that because when they get entered to the county database, it is just a city ordinance violation, labeled as city ordinance. So I wasn't actually able to pull direct numbers, but as of now, about 23 curfew violations in the past year. Okay. So some of the stuff that was changed for the definitions, the beginning time of curfew hours, on Saturday and Sunday, were changed from 12:01 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. The definitions of interstate transportation were removed. Sections of defense, so number seven, the minor, was in a minor motor vehicle, involved in an interstate or interstate transportation or was awaiting interstate or transportation by such means. And it was removed, and the following numbers were updated reflect the removal. So under Section 8.02.034 Enforcement Procedure, A, there was a written warning citations were changed to a warning. And under Section 8.02.034 Enforcement Procedures, B, the words Morgan's Point Resort Police Department were changed to the Morgan's Point Resort Municipal Court. Some other changes that were made were Friday was left off and then Sunday was added to the weekend. So the change to that would be. So you'd have, the Sunday would fall, the weekend would be Friday, Saturday. So it'd be 12, and Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, curfew would be at 11. I don't have a particular opinion about the city curfew violate, or city curfew ordinance. It's not like we poll every kid we see that is walking down the street. It's pretty much, we have contact with you for any reason, it's past curfew. You can either write your warning, turn it over to parents, or write your citations, turn it over to parents. Most of the graffiti car break-ins are committed by juveniles. That's one thing that we have to look into when making a decision about the future of the ordinance, depending on any further action by the state legislature. So any questions, concerns?
Does anybody have any questions when I ask Officer Todd? Officer Dodge?
A couple of things too on this one, and Sergeant Hodge kind of alluded to it. I really appreciate and commend Chief Schutzy and Sergeant Hodge for really diving into this and not just taking an existing ordinance and just throwing it back out there. They took the time to diligently, you know, review it. Kind of in full transparency of the ordinance, it's been around. Most cities are dealing with these or have these ordinances in place in some form or fashion. The state legislator right now is ongoing. The 88th legislation is ongoing right now. They are trying to, they have bipartisan support to wipe this off the table for every single city preemptively, at least as of now. So if that does happen, staff recommends we move forward with the ordinance, knowing that the state could eventually preempt it and it goes away. But at least, at least from the city perspective, the city's doing its due diligence the most way that.
After doing some research with the cities in our region, not just our county, but our region, pretty much every city has, or every city does have a curfew ordinance. The only two cities in Texas pretty much are Austin and Waco. Austin is due to staffing, and then Waco decided to get rid of their curfew. So other than that, all the other cities do have curfew ordinances. Yeah, so under the ordinance, if you're to and from school events, it's not gonna mess with you. To and from work, emergency situation, got a family's at the hospital, I gotta drop Scott &amp; Wyatt, that's exemption. Church events, work, case-by-case basis, yeah.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Alfred. I appreciate it. There's no further questions. I'm gonna close the public hearing at this time at 6:24. Moving right along. Item number six, Resolution 2023.06, has to do with funding for the library. And I know Pam's ready to give us some information. You gonna continue on that?
You muted me? I, I, okay, it has to be green, okay. So I had done a little spreadsheet of things that I've looked at. We meet tomorrow night. The library board meets tomorrow night. And we will go over this. It has to be finalized so we can get it to Catherine. And Sean is going to be working with Catherine on this. The first thing that I had put on here was, it's a nature walk. If any of you have ever seen a story walk, I believe, at Belton and Temple might have a story walk, out in the parks or down near a creek. Well, this is a nature walk. And I found out the company who makes these metal boards with a post, and you can put in, for a story walk, you could put in pages from a book and you could take that whole book, tear it apart, and people could go from post to post and read the story. Well, this is a nature walk. And it is done by a woman who is a naturalist. She is the illustrator and the designer of it. So there is your tie-in to the art, which we're required to have, $10,000. So, you know, I don't think the board has even seen this, but I had found this and I thought it would be something good for the parks, whichever one we put it in. Something for the children, something for the adults. The drawings are just fantastic. She has done these herself. She's made all of these herself. So there's that. We're talking about maybe a new arts and crafts show. Would need to have two big tents, use the event center. Need supplies for that. Our annual art show, which believe it or not, this coming year will be, or this year, will be the fifth annual art show. And so we'd probably have to do it when it's the seventh. We need supplies for that. Because if any of you have ever been to our art show, it gets a little crowded in here. And we have so many pictures that have been submitted. We're just finding space on the wall, on the windows. And especially on the windows, they fall off. The sun hits them. We're looking to perhaps do movies in the park. Music Under the Stars, classical music. Senior painting lessons. And summer reading, 2025. We have thought about having artists, we have four sessions, have artists teach the children either a craft or an art. And so all of these are art-oriented. I realize they come past the 20,000, but we're going to play with these a little. These are just ideas that we'll be discussing tomorrow night. So, any questions or?
I think you got a pretty good handle on it, and I wish you luck or good approval.
Okay.
Good luck on the ground.
Thank you.
If there's anything we can, if there's anything we can do to council or the cities, let us know.
The thing that council can do tonight is approve the resolution. So going forward with grants, you'll start seeing a lot more of these grant resolutions come out. And it doesn't necessarily mean that the funding is being allocated. It's just, it's letting council know that there's either a matching component or a non-matching component or something. Most grants require some form of resolution to submit with the documentation. So that's, we've, the library and staff and stuff has talked, and we do support and agree that there could be some great opportunities that could come out of this, you know, even with the 50-50 match, so.
If it's Resolution 2023.06 is ours, so I'd like to have.
I would like to make that motion.
In a second?
A second.
Any further questions?
I'd like to see a copy of the grant, too.
On provision two, it does say that 50% matching funds to pay for a number of said projects, events, as required by the NEA. So it's up to, I mean, I'm. Except, I mean, I'm comfortable with it. I mean, it's easy to amend it as councilmember Hartman wants and just add her language in there. I mean, that's, that's easy, we can do that now.
Okay, with you, Sean, do you want to add that to your motion? You can add it, okay.
Yeah, we can add that to it.
Any further discussion on that?
What was the language again, please?
All in favor of that?
Aye.
Can you oppose? Motion passes. Next item is Resolution 2023.07, has to do with our backup generator. But Carrie, I think you're going to, yeah, there you are. I'd ever get you this week. I knew we were, but I thought you were going to make an announcement on that.
Yeah, no, I think this is just how we're trying to get it in front of y'all, that if we're going to be applying for a grant that requires any city match, we need to make sure we have a resolution before we start the process. So, we actually found out today, the grant that we're looking, the grant that's in this resolution, we don't qualify for. So, just for the backstory on that grant, or for that generator, it's at the public safety center and it is inoperative, inoperable. So, right now, if we have a power outage, they will not be able to get the fire truck out. So, hopefully, we're trying to see if we, there is a, there should be a grant out there somewhere, but at some point, we need to fix that generator. So, because I think, Aaron, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but it was a surplus generator to begin with? That wasn't, okay. Was the surplus, okay. Yeah, so I mean, kind of as we get into budget season and stuff like that, that if we, we're going to put this in our replacement plan, so we're trying to find some funding, do not have to, but the whole bill, the whole cost of the generator. But, right now, this generator itself, we're just tabling it, and we will bring it back when we find a one that actually, that we fall under the criteria of, so.
In one addition, they can get the fire trucks out, their forearms will just be smoked. So.
Right, but in the case of an emergency.
It's not ideal.
Yes, sorry.
And they're going to have amazing forearms when they're done, but.
Do we need to have a resolution on table tonight?
It could just be skipped over, or y'all can postpone indefinitely. The right answer would be postpone.
Is there a specific reason we were turned down for the grant?
Really, so whenever we were looking into this, I think Matt had found, so we were using, we were getting the generator repaired under Holt, the manufacturer, or a different manufacturer than the actual brand, but, so they gave us a quote, and so it was going to be roughly, Hodge, like $80,000. So, then we were trying to say, we don't want to spend $80,000, let's see if there's a matching one out there. So this was the first one that Chief Schutzy had found. So as we went down it, we just went ahead, and the deadline was like in April. So we wanted to make sure that if we did qualify, we had something in front of y'all. So, as we submitted it, it was kind of a broad language. But then, when they got back to us, they said, it needs to be more at a state agency, not a city. So, there's going to be something else, we just got to find the right fit for us.
We will see this again, it will pop back up soon as they find something, so. Appreciate that, Carrie, thank you very much.
Thank you, Carrie.
We're going to table that to a later date. Now I'm going to go into ordinance 2023.03, which is, he discusses, considers the adoption of the curfew hours for minors. Everybody got a copy of that, or has anybody looked at the curfew? Have any questions on it?
Dennis, may I say, prior to moving on this, in the curfew hours, we.
We hate you for a minute.
It's not working, I'll just talk loud. On two, it goes in and out. No, it literally shuts down, doesn't it? Oh, thank you, Neil, all right. Okay, so, on item two, where, I mean, it says, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, on item one, and then it says Saturday and repeats Sunday again. We need that item two changed to Friday and Saturday in our definitions. You're so bad. With that, I move, with that, I move for the adoption of ordinance number 2023.03. With that correction.
Do I hear a second to that?
A second.
Any further discussion, any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
You oppose? On a silent, okay.
I agree.
Okay, it's unanimous there.
My battery was dead.
Okay, item D, on their closed property acquisition located in Seapark. We're going to table that right now?
Just for executive session.
We're going to, we'll move that to executive session then. If that's the case, the library, y'all have, library has any further discussion? Anything on your reports or anything? Good? Yes, you have anything to say, department? All the water flowing above ground or underground, not on the ground?
Let's brag about your perfect score. With Catrice, that was in your notes.
Yeah. They got a perfect score in wastewater from TCEQ, which is a great accomplishment. Yeah, he wanted to give Catrice what she deserves, a lot of the credit, she does all the paperwork. You know, we had a perfect inspection at our marina two months ago, we're, hey, we're on a roll, we're good.
Do you have anything to report further for the police department?
I do want to thank all the citizens for coming out too, and Becky, for putting on the Cookie with the Rookie last Thursday. Good event, new guys, liked it. Appreciate y'all coming out and supporting them and supporting the department. Next one will be a Coffee with the Cup. More to follow on that, because I'm horrible with dates, but thank you, let me know. Thank y'all.
Rookies with the rookies, that was good, yeah.
Yeah, that's cute, wasn't that cute, Becky came up with that.
Okay, Carrie, any further questions, anything you have? Oh, Taryn, let's see, I'm sorry, Taryn, you have? Could be.
Yeah, could be. Yes, with this, with this group, some may be back.
Not necessarily, we'll be here one more time, but it may not be here for the full meeting. Appreciate that. Now, now, Carrie, anything? Pretty good deal there, great, keep it up. Anything else, folks?
Yeah, I got a couple of things, mayor. So, I'm going to call Esther Weaver out over there, waiver, waiver hand or, or something. So Esther Weaver is our communications and marketing manager. She came on board beginning of last month. We're kind of keeping her on a negative 60-day kind of cycle to get her, her solid foundation built, get the department up and running, make sure we have the policy set and everything going. So, a lot of the stuff you kind of see is behind the scenes right now for, I'd say probably another 30 days or so. And then we're going to get her full-fledged into, well, everything. So we're really just building the foundation, and we'll have a strategic kind of plan for what that department looks like over the next 30 days. So, welcome Esther. Tomorrow, going to Austin for, one for many reasons, but, so there was 8,123 bills that were filed this legislative session, which is the most that they've ever filed in any one session. Typically, you'll see about 1,300 or so bills that will get passed at the end, and roughly about 200 to 300 of them that will impact local governments. So we're really trying to keep up with them all, I have a whole stack of stuff. Tomorrow, SB 369 is, has a public hearing, it was a last-minute one that we found. Ultimately, it regards annexation. If the bill passes in its current state, which we don't anticipate, it would say that any city that has municipal services, so police, fire, EMS, wastewater, wastewater, water, if you do not provide all the services within the city limits by December 31st of 2023, then those sections that don't have all the services automatically get de-annexed, which would be over 90% of our city. So, we know it's not going to pass in its current form, we just got to figure out what that looks like. That's one of many bills that is, is on the table right now that is impacting local governments just unbelievably. So, there's going to be a couple of us going down to at least, you know, show opposition to that, to figure out what, what we can do to get amendments, or figure out how that's going to make sure that it doesn't impact other cities, to, especially to include us. So again, I'm not worried about it being in its current form, we just got to figure out what form it's going to pass in. HB 1434, Senator, oh, sorry, Representative promoted him, Representative Brad Buckley, he filed a bill, again, this legislative session, to allow council to stagger the terms again. Little backstory on that, 87th legislation, HB, I don't even remember what it was, but, long story less long, it got put into local and consent, it made it through the House, made it through the Senate. Senate didn't play well in the sandbox, and they killed everything on local consent. If this bill does make it out of committee, it's in committee pending right now, then, once it passes, goes to the governor's desk, it'll allow city council by a simple majority to choose to stagger the terms if they want to. They don't have to, it's not a requirement, but it'll, it'll open up the door to do that. HB 824, also by Buckley, is, we weren't sure if this was going to make it or not, but I guess it did get in there. We didn't put this one in, this was his office filing this one. Would allow local governments of certain types, so pretty much any municipality, to change the uniform election date if they so choose, to a December, or a November date versus a May date. Why that's kind of coming about, and there's a lot of legislative chatter, and there are a few bills that are saying that any bond election would be forced to be on a November uniform date anyways, which would then require cities to pretty much have two elections anytime they had a bond or a, any major election. So, more to follow on that. Carrie already talked about Safe House of School Grant, moving on around to, just to put it into perspective, that's about a 1.8-ish million dollar project to cover. We're looking at partnerships with, or sponsor, sponsorships, really just letters of support. We'll start pushing that out with Belton ISD, City of Temple, TechSTOT, Priority Charter Schools, and just really the community support. We have a lot of the text, not text messages, a lot of the social media content from when kids were walking on the side of the road. We've saved all of those, so we have a lot of that already ready to go for those engagement letters. So, we're working on getting that stuff completed. Generator grants still in progress, I think there's like 20 steps or something. I think we're like halfway through, whatever that means. So right now, we got about anywhere, and not to mention all the other small little grants, we probably have about $2.4 million worth of grants out there kind of on the table right now, that are pending. Other than that, that is all I have.
We're going to adjourn to the executive session here in a few moments, for some personnel discussion. But I wanted to, a couple of things I wanted to mention. We had an Easter egg hunt that was Saturday. Even the weather was bad, not as good as we had hoped, we had tremendous turnout, I think. And, it was really a good turnout, had, I think, 8,000 eggs, did I hear that? Dorothy, was that right? And they, it took about 30 seconds or so to scuff them up.
Oh, they beat their record from last year.
My grandkids did a pretty good job on it. Also, keep in mind, I know you've heard some, there are Meet the Candidates, there are several programs out there that's going to be here on Fridays and Wednesdays and different times, and give you, it give you a chance to meet the candidates. Not everybody knows all the candidates, you know, please, if you get a chance, come out and meet them. Ask them some questions, it's a one-on-one, it's informal. You don't have to sit here and listen to them, you can talk to them, you can leave, whatever you want to do. But come meet the candidates when there's opportunity that you get a chance. And along with that, before you, before we meet here again in May, you're going to have to vote. So, please be sure and vote. And absentee voting starts toward the end of April, April 20?
24th.
So, absentee voting on that. Also, just for personal note, our city, our marina manager, Ronnie Stowe, lost his dad over the weekend, so, just for your information on that right there, so funeral was yesterday. After that, Donna, I think you have some stuff on the auxiliary, so.
Yeah, I have the auxiliary report. What Dennis said, I wanted to announce the meet and greet. This will be a meet and greet, it's going to be up at Brother Jeremy's Church. And once again, he is our facilitator and does an incredible job for us. That's going to be the 18th, April the 18th, from 6:30 to 8:00. Come a little bit earlier, the candidates will be there a little bit earlier. And then after it's over, we usually hang around and pick up chairs, and then, once we get kicked out of the church, we usually have another meeting in the parking lot. But thank you, thank you, Jeremy, so much for always being our great facilitator and being so supportive of our city, we appreciate you. And here's the auxiliary report. And that's going to be a chance, every candidate is coming, and it's, since it's in the evening, some of the events that they have during the morning and the days, we've got a lot of candidates that, you know, are working still, and they are not able to make those. Some of them are three or four hours, and they can't really take off their jobs that long. So, this is a great opportunity, it's after they get off work in the evenings, and everyone is going to be there, and they'll have bios. So, it's a great place where you can meet each and every candidate. All right, ladies auxiliary, they're going to meet this Thursday, right here, at 6:00 PM, and everybody's welcome to attend, they're always looking for new members, and they do a fabulous job for our city. The Easter egg hunt that Dennis talked about was Saturday, and they, they want to thank the city, and thank everyone who contributed to it. The auxiliary made 10 Easter baskets, five kites, two games, large stuffed animals for each age group. I know the cops, the cops were involved with that, making things too. They did baskets to the fire department, and police to give out over Easter weekend. Did y'all know that? Oh, okay. And they love the event. Flame of Knowledge, the applications will be this week at City Hall. And they're at the City Hall, and they're also at the counselor, school counselor's office. This is a $1,000 scholarship, and it's going to be announced during the June meeting. Grants in fire station sleeping quarters, the auxiliary has furnished the fire department firefighter sleeping quarters with new beds, bed frames, linens, end tables, lamps, fans, and other furnishings. They got a grant from Sam's, a grant from Walmart, grant from Walmart in Herker Heights, the one in Belton. And, once it's remodeled and been complete, they're going to have a ribbon-breaking ceremony, so you'll get to see these beds. I want to know, do you police officers, do the police officers get to sleep in these beds? You got to work? They sleep in their cars, that's what I'm hearing. Water aerobics, we're all looking forward to that, right, Lois? Okay, Dorothy, yeah, in May. And Barbara Lyman, thank you so much for heading that, there you are, thank you so much for heading that up. Every year, you do such a great job for that, a lot of fun, we get great exercise, and we really look good when we finish. So, I'll say that anyway. The Chili Cook-Off is going to be held September 23rd, and they're going to determine the location, they're still planning it. And then the 5K, we remember that that was postponed to 2024, and Joanne Guzman is going to be leading that, and the cops and robbers run. As always, we support the support and generosity of Mortgage Point Resort community, and you helping us to help our firefighters, and that was from Karen Steiger.
Is that it?
Yeah, you want more?
What I asked, do you want to say some more?
No, I'm good. Thank you all for coming out tonight, remember to vote, it's very important that we vote.
We're going to adjourn to the executive session in a second, I'm going to ask council members if they want to say anything right now before y'all leave, because we're going to have to clear the, the facility that we give back. You can stay, we will, we can back up after the executive session. Welcome to stay if you want to, we can't, we can't do it here. So, I'm going to call it, Donna, since you, mayor, broke in, Donna, do you have anything further to say?
No, just, just what I said, and, and, you know, reminding people to get out and vote, starting on the 24th of April, the sec, through the 2nd of May. And then, then the regular voting will be May the 6th. And I believe it's still all up in the library, is that right, Dalton, we kept that location? Okay. Okay.
Donna, what were the two hours that we were gonna extend the voting?
I think there's, it's still seven to four. Is that right?
First and second of May.
Yeah, second, first and second of May, it'll be seven to seven, right? Is that what you said? Yes, right.
That's when the voting meeting gets voted.
There you go, working people.
Bruce, do you have anything to say?
I just appreciate everybody coming out and getting involved in in the city and again, just reminding everybody to please vote.
Robbie?
Thanks for everybody coming out and I hope to see you next month.
That was a good ad, Bruce, you want to add that? You want to add that? Sean, you want to add that?
Larry?
Thank everyone for coming, I've enjoyed it and y'all make sure you go out and vote.
Come to, was it April eighteenth?
The meet and greet's April eighteenth.
Six to?
Six thirty to eight, sorry, date.
Those are always fun.
What's that? Yes, we do, we have a good time out of and we get some great questions. Oh, and they're not gonna kick us off that soon, we actually, Larry and I are not running for reelection, but we actually are coming back to the May meeting, because they have, we have to canvass the votes or vote on the votes, right, Larry?
Well, I'll say it one more time.
Yeah, we'll be back.
Everybody vote, vote often. Dalton, would you like to finish up anything? Neil, would you like to say anything? Folks, thank y'all very much, and under exec, government code five five one point oh seven four, we're going to adjourn for executive session for our personnel matters, so.
It's a bit of a mess.